All right, welcome to our meeting. You ready there, J.C.? All right. At this point in time, we will have role, please.
Branch?
Here.
Bray?
Here.
Costalas?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Henry?
Here.
Hussey?
Mahalovich?
Over here.
Prather?
Here.
Scrivner?
Here.
Got moved there, huh, Ricky Bobby? All right, next we'll have an overview. Obviously, tonight is our work session to deal with our transit system and to give us some history and an overview as a whole is our administrator, Steve Kroll. Steve, welcome.
Appreciate that, and everybody's moved around. You're going to throw me off now. It took me months just to get it straight. Now it's all over. We're going to talk a little bit about the transit tonight, obviously. Everybody knows that Matt Marash oversees transit. Richard Turner is here, Richard Wave, who does the day-to-day operations. And I just want to make sure that we, Richard knows that we thank him, all the drivers, and the staff, and the dispatchers, and everybody for all the hard work they do out there. They've really done a fantastic job on getting everything running there. So we thank you for all of that. Mr. Marash will review the history and operational aspects of Jeff Tran, and again, Mr. Turner's here as well. Bill Betts had another commitment, so he isn't going to be able to be here tonight, so I'll do an overview of the finances, and then I'll summarize at the end the staff recommendations. And feel free to ask any questions throughout the presentation if you have any. The purpose, as I understand it, of the meeting tonight is to provide a consistent base of knowledge on which you all will be making some decisions about Jeff Tran. We want to reduce the general fund subsidy of Jeff Tran and also stabilize operations of Jeff Tran by ensuring an efficient and effective operations of the system in order to, at a minimum, sustain and perhaps look at ways that we can consider, some ways to increase operations, maybe a weekend night, or a weeknight, or at least have some targeted basis to look at those. But from an organizational perspective, I think we want to talk about what it is that we want to accomplish, and then also talk about how to go about accomplishing the whats, the goals. And that will be part of the staff recommendations at the end. Although, to some extent, we'll be talking about the past. I really want the discussion to be about the future, the future of Jeff Tran. We'll be talking about buses, but I think that, in the broader perspective, we want to talk about transit, other forms of transit, pedestrian, private transportation companies, certainly taxis, and different types of transportation that are out there, pedestrian as well. And we'll be discussing routes, but I also want to encourage us to think in terms of connections, connections to services, shopping, health care, and employment, and understand, obviously, that Jeff Tran is an important part of those connections. We'll discuss the specific recommendations at the end of the presentation, but generally, staff recommends developing some strategies on how to sustain our current services and consider ways to increase services, at least on a targeted basis, in order to strengthen those connections. And I'd also want to add partnerships as part of that whole process. So with that, I'll turn it over to Mr. Marash, who will go through some of the operational aspects of Jeff Tran.
And Jeff, if you key up my mouse. And Steve, talking to the microphone, I guess we're on the air. Steve indicated big packet. And I had a pretty lengthy memo in there, which I just basically briefly am trying to summarize here, just to go through some of the high points. And if there's any questions, just feel free to stop and ask me as we go. But just try to give a little history of the system, some of the statistics about it, and our routes versus what they used to be, and just some of our enhancements we've done recent, just to get everybody on the same page of where we're at today, maybe where we had been a little bit, and so we can all start fresh there with good information. But just history, just of transit, history in Jefferson City, you know, in the early 1900s, streetcars were how people got around, and not buses, obviously, from, until about the '30s. Then a private bus service came online, and that operated until the '60s. And there was various owners, two or three different owners, and I got a little more history in the packet, but this is kind of the nuts and bolts of it. Bus service was private in those days. In '66, basically, the owner, the ownership shut the service down just because he was operating in deficits. And so in the '60s, people, I think, probably started, as we all know, had more cars and more, more ways to get about in then. And so it became more of a, the city formed a tran, I guess the Transit Authority was formed, and that worked for about 10 years. And then finally, the city put it under the Department of Public Works in 1976. So then, really in '76, it was a true, I guess, more true function of the city government at that point. So that was just kind of a brief history. I got a little bit more in the packet, but I'll just go, keep moving on here. My mouse, go to the next slide. One thing I wanted to do, we had got some help from the G.I.S. guys, and, there we go. And look at the various routes in, that are historical routes up until the, basically, in the mid, middle 2000s, first of the 2000s, but from the early 1990s. But we wanted to see what they compared like to current days. And it really isn't drastically different, but I would point out a few things. Let me move this over. This is the current routes and the trippers and shuttles. Current, excuse me, the routes were in brown back in those days, and the shuttle system and the tripper system was much more extensive than we have today, and that's in blue. The other thing to note about this is a little more compact. It probably served more downtown more often. You can see we had a little shuttle going across the river, and a lot of these shuttle, well, the shuttles were basically operated by the state, paid for by the state, or they were paid for by the state, operated by the city system. And they ran on a pretty tight frequency in many cases. But that also helped, probably ridership. You had more opportunity to get on the bus, especially those shuttles that went through downtown, maybe over to DNR, or out to, they had a shuttle that went out to the mall, that's that blue line here above my pointer. Then, and plus, there were seven routes at that time, and many more shuttles, or, excuse me, many more trippers. I think in total, there were 10 trippers and four shuttles on this, described on this photo, so that you can see the frequency was much more often. And typically, when you talk to transit folks, if the frequency is higher that they come by, you'll obviously get a few more riders that way. So that was probably one of the key is why, why our ridership, when I get to the chart about ridership, it was a little higher in, more than recent times. Turn that off. And everybody can get to this. This is out on our G.I.S. site. It's just a web-based map, very simple to use. You can turn these off and on right here as I'm doing. But this is today's system. Red is the regular route system. As you can see, we go further out. It seems kind of like those lines stretched out a little bit. And then the blues are trippers. Well, we have three trippers that basically operate in the afternoons now versus the 10 versus, you know, that we used to have in the morning and afternoon. And so obviously, down to six routes, and that is spread out more, too, so the frequency is 40-minute headways on our regular routes. So you can see, this is probably one reason our trip summary, our rider trips have went down a little bit in recent years. The thing I'd point out about this, and it was just a reaction to how things are developing, is that, yeah, schools are being developed further out, obviously. Walmart, East Walmart's much further out than it used to be. Some of our social service agencies are further out, way out on Truman, for example, or out on into Missouri Boulevard on the West End. And so trying to service all those functions as well. You know, we have our routes are a little more spread out. But just kind of an interesting look, and you're welcome, you can go in and look at this, too. I might just go ahead and do this and just show you the difference between the trippers then and now. The current trippers are in light blue, and the trippers and shuttles that operated are in the dark blue. So you can see, there was pretty, much more wide coverage in the, in the historic bus routes than there are today. And then I'll just turn those off and just compare regular routes real quick and don't labor this point too much, just to give you an idea. Move this over. But you can see out here, you know, we come way out further and come out in this area now where we used to not. And you can just flip these on and off real simply for yourself if you want to look at these. Anyway, just wanted to touch base and look at those and kind of explain some of that compactness we were talking about. Oops. Don't want to do that. There we go. Okay. Moving on, a little more stat-type things. This kind of reflects that route ridership I was talking about, but this is a chart out of your, one of the handout I had in the packet, but this is the 10-year trip summary. And a trip is if you, say, ride the bus to go shopping, for example, at Walmart, and you get off, and you do your shopping. An hour later, you get back on to go home. Well, that ended up being two trips in this number. But you can see, from 2004 to 2013, we had a peak in the middle there, but that also coincided with the end of the state shuttle systems right in this area. So we're down from the peak there about 449,000 to 335,000. So almost 100,000 trip difference just in that time period. So it's pretty drastic change. One reason that's something to note is that it does affect your federal funding. They look at, one of the components of that is, you know, your ridership. The other interesting thing about this chart, if you'll note, is the paratransit trips, more or less in the 50,000s, stayed pretty, pretty steady through that time. Maybe a slight increase as a percentage as we go up, 57,000 now this last year, but, but the majority of the difference is in that shuttle system, it looks like is. And the, and that's also when the headways changed, just right after that, to the 40-minute headways versus the 30. So, so the frequency with the shuttles, as well as the headway change, probably affected those trips a little bit there. But that's, and feel free to stop me if you have a question. Another little interesting thing about our buses, just our inventory schedule. We've talked about this in public works meetings before, but if you're in the back room, this might be a little hard to see, but it's also in the packet. But the top of the, the top of the schedule indicates, basically, our larger buses are our regular route fleet and our school tripper fleet. And they range in age from 2005 to 2012. And I think we often get a question about, you know, it looks like we have all brand-new buses all the time, and as you can well see, that most of them have, you know, several miles on. We try to even that out through the scheduling, and you have to have a spare ratio. So our heavy loads in the afternoon with the three school trippers, so we'd have nine of those large buses running at a time, and we have 12 total shown on the screen. So you have that spare ratio in case you have a breakdown, or has to be, you know, they're clean, fueled, those kind of things. Then, all of these buses have been purchased with federal funds, so they have a 12-year minimum lifespan that you have to keep them. And I put that out there in the last, the far end of the chart. First opportunity to replace any bus would be out in 2017. And talking with our maintenance folks and our administration folks, you know, we feel we might even get a few more years out of them then. So really, as far as a fleet of buses on our regular routes, we're in pretty good shape for our transit coaches. These are all the large Gillig buses. And another thing to point out in more recent years, one thing that has been going on is we've decreased from a 35-foot bus to a 29-foot bus. So just a little more neighborhood-friendly, maybe a little public perception mixed in as well. You save a little money, not a, not a great deal in the purchase price, but some money is saved there. Again, our matching money comes from CIP sales tax for these transit matching purchases. One thing, in recent years, the federal money hasn't been really that available for purchase of buses, but luckily, the city at the time took advantage of bus purchases and, and was able to get a good fleet. And so we're pretty stable in that regard, so that is a good, good aspect of our regular route system. The bottom half of the charts reflects our paratransit buses. And actually, I probably did the math a little wrong there. It looks like the spare ratio should be 25% because we run eight, eight paratransits, and we have 10, 10 in the, in our barn. But as you can see, some of those were actually, you, we might remember, we're going to replace one here at the end of the year. We were able to sell about three of them, I think it was, and, and use that money towards purchase of another bus. We're actually having a couple of problems, I believe it's with the 06 bus. We had an engine go out and various things. And you can see from the, there are five-year minimum FTA replacement on those. So they were first able to be replaced in 11, but we've eked out a few more years on most of them, and we're in 14 now. So just replacing, I think, the one here at the end of the year. Excuse me. These are, we call them mini-bus. And of course, they'll, they'll hold several passengers, but, but when you get a wheelchair in there and various things like that, you know, that does take up a lot of space. So that's kind of our two, two type buses we, we utilize, and again, reflects that paratransit versus regular route, route inventory of buses that we have. Go to the next slide here. And I may mention this, I'll come back to it in a second, but just want to go over, I don't have every statistic I had in the packet, but, you know, I'm pretty, trying to cover most of them. But one of the questions I'm often asked is about the fare, you know, how much is the fare, what's it cover versus what it doesn't really cover of its operation. So on the regular route, excuse me, the fare is a dollar, and the, the actual cost, when you look at that, is to run is a little over $5. The reason that third line is in there, if we were to take out the personnel cost on the, out of the budget, and just look at it on the fuel and maintenance side, it's about a dollar a trip to run those. And this, this is based on how many trips we have that year, too, just as an average. Got a little cough here. But anyway, the reason I point that out is, many times, we're often saying, well, what if we increase the, the headway? Would that save us any money? Well, if you think about it, you know, initially, you might think, yes, it would. But really, you, you're still employing that driver. He's just driving a longer distance on the same route, so his bus is still running, whether it's sitting at a stop idled or running down the road. So it really doesn't increase a lot, but the savings is really, like most things in our, in our world, is personnel cost. So if you've got six drivers on the road, whether they're driving in a circle for 40 minutes or 30 minutes, the cost differential isn't that great. It's the number of bus routes you would have there. So that, just to point that out, it's probably obvious once we start talking about it, but I think a lot of people, and we've tried various headways, 30 or 40-minute headways. Same thing on the paratransit side. The fare is $2 there, and you have to sign up for the service. And I think, how many clients do we have, like around 2,000 have signed up for that service? 2,000 persons have signed up for that. The, the actual cost is $17.58 on that, on that system. I've often heard comments about, what if we were to, you know, have more paratransit, less regular route? Well, you can see the cost to service those riders is, is quite a bit more. So it's really, you know, we're, we're trying to get people on the regular route system, maybe instead of the paratransit system, just because of the cost differential, for one thing. It's more effective to get, you know, put more people in a bus and transport them that way. Again, but you can see how the personnel cost drives that up as well. So if you have eight paratransit on the road, again, whether they're transporting short-distance trips or longer trips, there, there's still, that personnel cost is a great effect.
Is there not a higher reimbursement for paratransit than for per rider in the subsidy hire from the government?
Well, there could be, depending on the rider. And, and we do participate in those programs, but not everyone is available, that it's available for. So it just depends. But that, I didn't try to go into that detail here. That's kind of a, you know, you really have to do some, it'd be very difficult to discern which exactly trip is what, and that type thing. Like I said, there's, I think there was over 50,000 trips on those paratransit buses. So, you know, a blend of those. And of course, in the budget, though, it does break out our Medicaid waiver costs there, I believe.
Non-emergency.
Yeah, non-emergency medical. Another statistic I just wanted to point out, it's kind of an internal matter, but just some of our turnover within transit, something I, you know, discovered doing this. You can see the numbers there, but, you know, pretty high turnover rate within our transit division. And a lot of that, and Steve alluded to it a little bit in his memo, too, is that we run this 11 and a half hour day with one shift of people. And so anytime we look at increasing that, obviously, it's a tough shift to work for somebody. If you think about it, if you've got to be available 11 and a half hours every day, you, you know, trying, we're trying to schedule like long three, three-plus-hour breaks in the middle of the day, but still, you're, you have to be available. Those other hours, coupled with a high turnover rate, many times, you don't, you might get some overtime, but you're going to work those, a couple of those extra hours during that day. You might have thought you were going to be on a break. So it's really hard to schedule your personal time, if you have any children, doing school activities and various things. It's, you know, it's a hard, it's a hard shift to work. It's a good job, but it is, you know, time-consuming. So something that we want, are taking note of, and we want to try to improve upon that as well, is why we're going through this process and see if there's other ways to go about staffing this, or, or things of that nature, of course. And that also, in turn, adds a lot to your overtime budget within transit. So, so you've got to be mindful of that as we go. And then just a few of the enhancements that's happened recently in transit, probably in the last five years, I'll call it. Obviously, we have a new heated-cooled transfer facility down at Miller Street. It used to be on High and Jefferson Streets, just open air, no public restrooms. The next one down, security enhancements. We have cameras and various things to keep it safe. It's near our transit, it's right outside our transit administration office, so it's more secure. And I think the patrons probably feel, feel better, you know, that it is secure, more secure like that. All our buses have security on them as well with cameras, and so very, very safe facility. Like I said, restrooms and heated and cooled, so that's a really good enhancement that has occurred recently. We also parked a bus right outside here, and you can see on the front of that, there's bicycle racks. That's a small thing, but we're, we're looking for small things we can do with our, within our budget to make the user experience a little better. And so if you can ride a bicycle and you want to, you know, get to the bus or to or from your destination, you know, you can put your bike on the bus. And people utilize, seem to utilize that pretty well. And occasionally, we'll get a bike left on there. Somebody will forget they had their bike when they got to work, and he'll ride around all day, and they'll be there for them when they get back. Sidewalks and shelters, something in engineering that they've been really focused on, is trying to get, working with our CIP and build sidewalks along major bus routes. Obviously, Missouri Boulevard's the, the highlight of that. But in the last year, we were counting them up, we put over 30 new shelters in the last, not year, but in last handful of years. So a lot of new shelters out there for people to wait in for the bus. Another item has happened probably two, two years ago or so, two or three, is a cellphone app where you can get on your phone, if you're waiting at a bus stop, and look and see where your bus is in relationship to your stop, and know that, okay, in 10 minutes or so, the bus will be here, you know, it's coming. And so that's a nice application you can Development component, or whether it's CIP or our development, Janice and my group both, we look at new developments like Sam's Club, for example. We'll have a bus turnout and a bus shelter installed with it on this, on the system. Our McCarty Street project that we, you know, an internal CIP, also, there was a bus turnout place there and stops made more comfortable for folks. So we tried to do, look at that as we do our CIPs and our develop, large development projects. And I listed several of them in your packet here. On-bus advertising as revenue generator, we do have on-bus advertising. Like I said, we parked a bus outside, so you might have saw that on the way in, just you see those billboards on the side. There are full wraps for the buses available. No one had taken us up on that, although Richard got a call just late this afternoon that we will have a, a full wrap on one bus, I guess, coming up in the very near future. So, so that is working. It generates a little bit of money. We, I think we target about $24,000, $25,000 in our budget that that's going to generate. And then again, I mentioned our, our downsizing the buses to 29 feet instead of 35 feet. Can't do all of them that way, like Missouri Boulevard route. It, it carries a lot of people, so you do need a mix of larger and smaller buses as well.
Matt, does the federal government have any input on the size of buses we use?
I'm sure they have some input, but you might field that, Richard. They basically lead it up to the property and their need and the amount of funding that is there. We try and stay away from the cutaway buses, like the Ford chassis we use for paratransit, because they aren't made for the stop-and-go. You need a heavy-duty transit bus to handle that type. To, to give you, for instance, a paratransit bus is 27-foot long. We've gone to the 29-footer, so there's only two-foot difference. And you get the wider aisles and everything for the, for the baby strollers, the shopping carts, and all those things. So the 29-foot bus is a better option for most of our routes, just not for the higher-capacity routes. And we'll mention also those, those Gilligs there, kneeling. They call it a kneeling bus, where they kneel down, and then a ramp comes out so that people can access them easily. And so that's kind of a nice feature of those as well.
All right, thank you.
Matt, I have a question about the, the revenue generator. Is that advertisement done local, or is that out of state, or what?
It's a company, and they're out of Minnesota, or, it's HOK. I put, actually, in the packet, I forgot where it was. HOK, it's up north. HOK, yeah, HOK Advertising. But anyway, it's, they, they're a national, they're a company that markets at least mid, in the Midwest, and so they, they can have contacts with national chains, for example. Yeah, they've been in business for a long, many, many years. And, you know, we went out, I believe it was under RFP process several years ago. Janice was involved in that, not, not I, but they were, they were the best selected at the time. And of course, the more advertising they sell, it's a, it's a revenue-sharing contract. They get, they get some of the profit, and we get some.
So during that RFP process, there was no local bidders for, or local takers on that?
And I guess we sit in on the bit, the process, and I don't believe anybody local put in for it.
And if I can say something, normally, when you, when you go out, you don't want a billboard company to do on-bus advertising, because nine times out of 10, they're going to sell their billboards before they'll sell your on-bus advertising. You're better to go with a company that specializes in on-bus advertising, because that's, that's the only game that they're in. So it's better to do that.
Well, I guess my, my thought of it was that if you have someone who's out of state, they may not know the local business people who are here who'll be willing to participate. And they're going to really horn in on those national chain people and not the people's, I don't think we're getting our bang for our buck. That's just my thought on it.
Well, it's possible. I know we are, all of our placards, I think, are full at this time. It's just the wraps we haven't been able to get. And I think, you know, I observe the, observe those. I went to other places, and, you know, they, I was telling Steve earlier today, I saw a couple in Columbia, basically just advertising Columbia events, basically all they were doing. But, but again, we're going to have one. I know the gentleman that was here from Chick-fil-A the other night indicated, well, I think he was from Atlanta or somewhere, but he indicated, you know, Chick-fil-A had wraps there. Well, you know, they haven't bought any here, but again, a national chain, maybe they feel they're busy enough. I don't know. But, you know, but yeah, we're obviously willing, and that's a, a year, a contract that's re-yeared annually for up to three years. And I think we're getting close to that three-year, where we'll be taking it out again for an RFP.
The bulk of our advertisement is on local.
Yeah, and they do, the bulk of the advertisement on the buses is from local business. If you, you know, St. Mary's is on this one right outside here.
Body shops.
Body shops, things like that.
I think they were the only responsive bidder, too. They were, I think they were the only one who actually bid on it.
It's kind of a specialty deal. This really works well for us, because they, they come in, while the buses are running, and they'll come in, they know when they, they've been very good about, okay, it's going to be at the transfer station. They, they send a team in, they take those things out, and they put the new ones right in. And away they go with the new advertising. So again, the more they sell, the more they make. So they have a lot of incentive to sell to whoever. We have Boy Scouts, I think, advertising on some of them. So I, some of the local folks are utilizing it. And I think that's pretty well all I had. Just wanted to quit, a quick overview of what I had in the packet. Of course, you know, it's a lot more information in the packet, but I just want to hit the highlights of it for you guys. Happy to answer any questions, or turn it back to Steve?
Matt, you refer to tripper routes, and I've always thought of tripper routes as being, serving the schools. And I, I think that's what the three tripper routes now are doing. But when we had 10, were part of the tripper routes the shuttles? And then what else?
No, we had, we had trippers and shuttles at the time. Now, anybody can ride a tripper bus, and, and many of the school kids might take them maybe directly where they're going, or they may get on one and go to the regular route buses. And just how, depends on where you live.
So define a tripper route, then. What, when you had 10 tripper routes, what, what were they exactly?
We had morning tripper routes, which some of them mirrored the evening routes, but some of them were specialty routes in the morning. They were basically to get the kids to school, basically. The morning routes, we lost ridership on them. They started, parents were taking kids to school. Times changed, and so we kept deleting routes. And then now, now we're down to the three evening routes.
So it wasn't just a cost measure, anything like So it wasn't just a cost measure or anything like that? It was a matter of the ridership was slowly eroding and, and we were responding to the ridership eroding?
Exactly. And tripper routes, they are, we aren't allowed to get in the school bus business. Tripper routes are allowable to public transit providers. It's, it's for overflow after school, but we can never get in the school bus business. There are some transit agencies that are in the school bus business, but they got grandfathered in before, and there was no school bus service available in their area.
Okay.
It's federal law, right.
Just on, on that one, maybe talk about the impact that the school district extension, they're, they're picking up a wider radius and what impact that may have on the trippers.
Yeah, I mean, it's, the, the tripper routes, they don't run but in the afternoon, and we're down to what, three? I don't remember the exact dollar now, I have it in my memo probably, but I had in a memo to Steve earlier, some memo, but we may lose some revenue on that, it's just kind of a, hard to discern, you know, we, I think we estimated a fifty percent loss or something when we talked about that. But again, it's, it just depends on, you know, where you want to go and how close you are to school and those kind of things.
The school district reduced their, their radius for which they're picking students up?
Yeah, they went from three to, three to one mile, I believe is what they went to. So, there is a radius reduction, so it's potential. Now, Richard would also point out to me that we're one of the few transit agencies left that do tripper routes, basically servicing schools, although we have a lot of parochial schools in town as well, probably a high percentage of those, so, so it'll be interesting to see how that works.
Last year, when we had our discussion about routes and so forth, and I don't remember if it was last year or the year before, but there were, there was a lot of concern on the part of some parents that they didn't want to see those routes discontinued. And at that time, this public school district responded by indicating that they would be willing to pay a higher rate. Will that change from one to three, or from three to one miles? Will that affect that?
First of all, they, they don't, you know, pay any rate right now.
Okay.
And I think, and I wasn't directly involved at that time, I don't know if Janice, or maybe that was Roger Schwartz at the time, Richard was here obviously, but I think I recall there being some mention of they were willing maybe to, to contribute some at that time, but no one, I don't believe it was followed up upon at that, that service.
Okay, so, that certainly is not very likely scenario. Now, the private schools were also concerned about transportation for their children, and they haven't changed anything, they're, they're still, they would still be reliant to the extent that they have been in the past, I would assume.
Yes, and, you know, and I point out that most of the schools have a regular route bus goes past them as well. So like Richard said, it's kind of a peaking-type issue. They, what do they run for, about a little over an hour?
Hour and a quarter.
Hour and a quarter.
So they could, so, so students, especially if the bus isn't full, they could make use of a regular route bus.
Yes, yeah.
And not, we wouldn't necessarily have to run the trippers, and, and that might free up those funds to, to.
Right. Every time you're running a bus, you have another driver in the seat that isn't, that's being paid or isn't on break or, you know, or contributes to that, that pressure on, on overhead, yes.
Sure, thank you.
Any other operational questions? I, I would just mention that there are a lot of ideas and staff did not, and we didn't go through and list out a lot of the suggestions because we didn't think that was really appropriate to be discussing a lot of those right now, but that would be part of one of the recommendations that we make later on. I'm going to very quickly cover some of the finances that Bill Betts was going to do. I don't have a PowerPoint for that. We do have the information on our website though, the audit, and of course, the budget for transit, so if anybody's interested, they can get that off our website. The total operating budget for JeffTran is about two and a half million dollars. Staff in the past has not included the administrative fee for JeffTran, similar to what we do for most other departments. We're suggesting that we do that this year to give a more accurate reflection of what the cost is for operating JeffTran. If we do that, it's your decision at budget time, but if we do that, the operating subsidy required at that time will be about a million dollars, little over a million dollars, about 1.1 million dollars. Some amount of operating subsidy is, is appropriate and necessary, I think, for almost all transit systems. There are a few, mostly larger, but some smaller ones that have a dedicated revenue source to help pay for that particular subsidy, be it the sales tax or sometimes with universities, they have a fee that helps pay for that. But there's a dedicated revenue source that helps with that subsidy. Our funding, most of our funding, well, we get a substantial amount of our funding from governmental sources such as federal and state government. That is about, we get about a little over a million dollars for that, and that's about forty-three percent of the overall 2.5 million dollar budget. So about forty-three percent of the overall budget comes from federal and state government revenues right now. What's going to happen with those in the future, increase, decrease, I don't know, but that's what we, that's what we did for 2013. And approximately, the exact number is point zero eight seven four percent of the overall budget comes from fares. So less than one percent of the budget for transit, we receive from fares. And our current fare, as Matt mentioned, is about a do, is a dollar. And the operating subsidy for 2013 was about 658,000 dollars, and that is about 26 percent of the overall operating expenses. Over the last five years, when we look at the operating subsidy over the last five years, it's been about five million dollars when we look at all those five years together. So that's about a million dollars a year is the subsidy amount. Now, there's a lot of things that goes on with that. Sometimes we're using some transit dollars that were in the fund balance, sometimes sales tax was a piece of that, so, you know, when all that stuff goes, it's been about a million dollars a year subsidy. And, and, and again, the, the specifics are on our website if somebody wants to go through and look at all the details, particularly one of the pages from the audit which was included in the packet, which is also on the website, is very informative because it breaks down some of those other operating costs and the advertising and some of the specific revenue sources. So with that, I don't know if there were any other financial questions that you wanted me to go over. That was a brief summary of the highlights from the memo.
So the one-dollar fare, what does that add up to in the year then? I, I know we had it before, but I did not notice.
Yeah, the, the.
You say it's, it, in the overall budget, it's very men, it contributes very little.
It's less than one percent, it's about 600, right. The overall fares are 220, I believe. Two-hundred-and-twenty thousand.
Yeah, that, so it'd be ridership times a dollar.
Right. And that fare is 220 dollars, that fare, that fare is what it's, uh, you know, it's a, yeah.
And it's, it's under, it's important to understand that when the fare increases, just because you increase it by a certain percentage, you may not get, you know, that same amount of increase in ridership. There's an elasticity of demand, I think everybody realizes that, so.
Okay, thank you.
I, I may not have been listening carefully enough, but did you say that the total budget's about two and a half million?
It's about two and a half million, yes.
And did you say the fares were about 228,000?
Yes.
Isn't that more like 10% rather than, I mean, or, or 8% rather than eight tenths of a percent?
Yeah, the fares are about less, I think it's less than one, 10%?
Well, isn't 220,000 about 10% of two and a half million?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have my calculator here to figure that out.
I mean, it's about 8% of two and a half million.
Yeah, I, I, yeah, I think the decimal was off there.
I mean, I just did it in my head, but that's.
The, the, the point though is that fares do not cover a majority of the operating costs for the transit system.
That's true. Okay, and, but if you, you know, if the fares were doubled, I'm not suggesting that they should be, but I'm just saying if they were, then, then you're talking about 20% or 16% of the.
Right, although, as we were just mentioning, there, there is a, a direct correlation between the increase in fares and the increase in ridership, there's, but, you're, you're correct, essentially.
Okay. And then, I had another, I had another question, and I, and I was prompted to ask that question by, by the numbers, and I can't remember what the other question was, so I guess that'll come back to me later.
Steve, from what I see here, if our subsidy is roughly 1.1, if you took fares and, and we don't want to hear any boos here in my sandwich, we should do this, but you'd almost have to take fares and times them by five in order to not have a subsidy at all, which obviously would not be affordable.
Correct.
I was just trying to put clarification to people watching at home that fares are really a very small por, portion of our overall budget. I mean, I know for years and years, as, as a council and different mayors, we've thought that, that fares would bring more if you, if you had more paid in, but that amount is hard to stack up against 2.5.
Right, and that's also consistent with some of those, those dollars that Matt showed on the true operating costs, it was about five dollars and, and something. But I, I think the overall point, I agree, is, is a lot of people, or some people at least, think that fares are paying for the entire bus service, and that's just not the case, even with the government, federal and state government subsidy.
Do you remember offhand, I don't want to put you on the spot, you can send us a note if you can, but how much is the state portion versus the federal portion?
I don't know offhand, and most of it is state though.
Okay.
Do you know?
It's federal, most is federal.
Federal, yeah, most of it's federal.
Seven-hundred-and-thirty-something thousand a year in federal operating funds.
State is very little, they reduce their, they've reduced their money, it's, I think we just signed an agreement.
Well, the state, state actually is about 10,000, and then you get your different Medicaid programs is another.
300,000 or so, 200 and something.
I remember what my question was now. The, what we're talking about here today is, or so far today, is the, the subsidy from general revenue. But when we need to replace a bus, or we need to do repairs to a building, or we need, whatever we might do, that is over and above general revenue subsidies because that generally is something that is dedicated to the capital improvement sales tax, so.
Correct.
So in addition to the million-dollar subsidy, annual subsidy, as you replace buses or as you do repairs, those costs are over and above and are not a part of the normal everyday operating costs. Those are costs, and we do get subsidy or get help with those costs, but do you know, is it the same ratio? Is it still about 43% of the cost is borne by the state or federal government, and, and the city picks up more on buses or buildings, or do you know how that cost share is done?
Eighty, 20?
I think a lot of, most grants are 80, 20, I mean, they, they vary on the buses, but like I said, it's based on appropriations from the feds. Building repairs, typically we paid those 100% out of our transit CIP. They do typically house also central maintenance and things of that nature. There are, and now the repairs, and if you're just repairing a bus, that would come out of operating general fund.
General fund, okay.
So you're right, there's, there's additional funds, and just in addition to the regular operating subsidy, there's a capital piece of that whenever we do have capital expenditures.
So, all right, thanks.
Ralph was next.
I, I did use my calculator and discovered that point oh eight three is nearly 10%. If you add point oh one seven, then it's, becomes 10%.
I think the decimal just needed to move over to change it to percent, yeah.
Yeah. Doesn't change the dollars though?
No.
Right.
Same dollars.
Mr. Mahalovich.
According to our sales tax F, we had 100,000 in 2014, and we'll have 200,000 in, planned in 2015. These are matched for buses or?
Uh, give me answers, I'll go ahead and answer that. Basically, in our sales tax, it's really, you're talking about the cash flow of it, but when it was set out, there was 500 allotted for transit. It says transit matching, I think, which is kind of a misnomer, it, it's more or less transit capital is the way we utilize it, or studies, like I think we're talking about a study here. If we do another study, you know, you could take it out of these funds, that's typical where we get that, those type of dollars. So you're talking, you're talking about the cash flow, but I kind of look at it as over the five years, if we, you know, it's, it's 500,000 is what it is.
Yes, and then in 2017, there'll be, the cash flow says 200,000, so it could be used for whatever.
And we don't foresee needing any buses, so, you know, somebody else needed the cash flow to build, say, the road at BICAP region, so we've kind of, instead of 100,000 a year and just banking it, we, you know, massage it around, so it's a total of 500 over the five years, and each year it's changed based on cash flow needs.
Yeah, I see that in 2012, only 50,000 was used out of that, so, where you had 100,000 allocated.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any other questions of, on the financial part, by council? Okay, Steve?
So, at this point, staff recommendations are, one, to consider, and that's to consider, look at, consider whether there's merit to a fare increase of which, you know, there's advantages and disadvantages and what are the trade-offs, and so, I think that that's something that can be done at a staff level, rather than having a consultant come in and do a fare analysis. Obviously, there'd be a lot of stakeholder and public input on that whole process. The other recommendation is to pursue some, a short-term recommendation is to look at some increased ridership options. I identified a few of those, there may be several other ideas that we can pursue in the short term. There may be some longer-term options as well, and I think that that leads into the recommendation of the next one, which is to look at engaging a consultant to help us develop a strategic plan on how to proceed with addressing the various issues affecting JeffTran. And, I, I was just going to say, in my mind, that's not a lot like the 2006 study. It's more of a strategic plan that talks about what we want to accomplish and then how to accomplish those particular goals over a number of years. So, we've got a plan laid out over a number of years, what's going to happen and when those things are going to happen and what those are. Now, there's going to be some changes in that, obviously, with any kind of a strategy, but this would be a strategic plan that would identify some specific steps, and obviously there's a lot of input from stakeholders and the public, and council would obviously be making the, the final decision on that. And the cost of that is probably in the 50 to 75,000 dollar range, and then, as Matt mentioned, could possibly come from sales tax, although there may be some other partners interested in helping to pay for that, if that's the decision that you all make. I think that we're aware of the sales tax, sales tax, tax, from, from the state, which involves some transportation components, there may be some discussion to consider there. I think we need to review the bus driver schedule, as Matt mentioned earlier, see if there's some short-term kinds of options that we can make some sense out of. Maybe there's a pilot program that we can try a few things and, and look and see if there's some ways to address that break in the afternoon. And then, there's been a little bit of discussion about looking at, at some improvements to the revenue that we get from advertising. I haven't had an opportunity, and Matt and I haven't had an opportunity to have some discussion with the advertising company, but we can certainly do that and see what kinds of things that they do to take better advantage of some of the local kinds of businesses that we have here, although, as, as Matt mentioned, many of the businesses that are on there are local businesses. So those are some of the short-term recommendations. I think the strategic plan would lay out some of the kinds of longer-term decisions and some options that we could consider.
Steve, I have a question about, did you call it a consultant, or what words did you use exactly?
I'd, I'd call it a consultant, that has experience in transit, but is still independent from our system and come in and make some recommendations.
Obviously, there's a, there's a scope of work that comes with that. Are you looking at trying to bring forth a, an RFP to go out for a consultant that shows the different scope and whatnot that we want to try, or what were your thoughts there?
Yes, that would be, my recommendation is if that's something that council feels comfortable with, is to go ahead and start preparing that request for proposals and go through that process.
So in other words, they wouldn't be technically spending the money tonight as much as agreeing to go forward with a consultant?
Correct, and go through our whole.
And I'm assuming, would a, what could a consultant do to help us? I know that here, Janice or Matt, how, how long ago was it that we? Matt, how long ago was it that we started that southwestern route that didn't, was my first year, was it in 11?
What year was it, two?
Three years ago.
Ten or eleven?
Anyway, I know a part of that was
It only lasted four months and then it was deleted due to
We thought it was great, it just didn't happen.
Now, I think Steve is not talking about a consultant to evaluate our routes necessarily. That's something internal we're well capable of doing.
Yeah, this, this wouldn't be a route analysis. It really would be to talk about various strategies, all the ideas that the community has and council has and everybody else, and to weigh those and to lay out steps by whatever we decide, year, month, quarter, whatever it is, to lay out the actual strategies to accomplish that. I don't know what those are because we haven't been through that process yet, but I think a consultant that has expertise in transportation, has the software and the staffing to be able to go through that analysis and to get all the input from the public and say, hey, here's an idea that may or may not make sense given our particular system. Maybe everything that we're doing is the best way to be doing it and there aren't any improvements, I don't know, but I think this would lay out some strategies on what we want to accomplish and when, and then how.
Just so I'm running up to speed here, do you think this consultant would, could they help us with other funding measures or other funding opportunities?
Related to JeffTran?
Yes.
Yes, I think that revenue enhancement would be one of the discussions that they would be focused on.
Mr. Henry.
Steve, I guess my question to that is why not have an advisory committee as opposed to going off and hiring a consultant? What would be, what would be?
Wrong with having an advisory committee do that instead of a consultant?
Well, I think the, an advisory committee, as I mentioned earlier, it's important, from my point of view, to have the stakeholders, riders and citizens, involved in providing input and ideas. But I think we need to have somebody that can take an independent, objective look at those different ideas and maybe give us some hard recommendations that we don't know what those are yet, but more specifically, lay out a plan. Here's, and obviously, it'd be subject to council approval, but it's a plan of the specific strategies, ways that we want to accomplish things and when. So I think that we'd be getting the input from advisory committee and people and everybody else that would want to have that input. I mean, that's something that the consultant would be required to do, probably several meetings.
Couldn't you have someone within that group charged to do something like that, though? I mean, couldn't you have someone a part of a group like that to actually do that? Because what I look at, we're already talking about cutting costs and cost this and cost that when it comes to budget time. That's going to cost us.
It is, I know. I think the other question is, can Matt and I do it and Richard do it? Probably, but I think that it, there's merit to having an independent person come and say, this is what's going on in different cities, here's some other ideas, here's part of the federal funding process. Ridership is part of it, but there's some other things that are important in the federal funding process, including density in the city and some different options. So I think the consultant would be able to maybe tell us some things that we may not already know.
I think one thing too, Mr. Henry, is that I think an advisory group, I think we have a group here before us that's obviously an advisory group. And one of the reasons for calling this meeting tonight and having staff on working this so far is, I mean, I kind of struggle with the cost portion of it, too, like you said earlier. But I kind of look at it this, I mean, if you're going to, if you're going to build a house, you hire an architect and engineer and electricians and plumbers and all the above, you hire the professionals to do that. I think if we're going to try to build, evaluate or rebuild our transit system, I think it's going to take an outside resource to possibly do that. And I think that firm, I shouldn't say person, that firm would obviously have our stakeholders' best thoughts in mind as we went down the process on something that Steve and I talked about before, but I think that a group or several people could be reporting back to that consultant, public hearings or whatever.
I would say, but businesses can be stakeholders, nonprofit organizations, it's not just the riders. Obviously, the riders are very important because they're the big users of the system, but there's other stakeholders out there as well.
Would it not be worthwhile to look at, like Columbia or Springfield to see if they've had a consultant come in the last four or five years and get what they gave them in a report and let's look at that, see if that won't give us some ideas and save us some money?
We could, we could. I think some, Columbia's subsidy is higher than ours and I also think that they do some things that may not be acceptable to this community, but we certainly can look at what they've done. The consultant is going to come and develop a strategic plan, where we want to be and how we want to get there. It's that direct.
How many years would you anticipate that a plan would be for? Would you anticipate to be a five-year plan, 10-year plan, 20-year plan?
Like three, I'd look out three to five if we could.
Okay, so if you're talking about two and a half million dollars a year budget times five years, you're talking about, what, 12.5 million dollars?
Right, you're looking at a million dollars a year subsidy. Now, whether this process reduces that, I can't make that guarantee, but at least we'll know the answer or at least have a better idea of that answer.
I guess what I'm saying is that even if you're just talking about 5 million dollars, that's about one and a half, 75,000 is one and a half percent of 5 million dollars. So return on investment wise, if you get a situation where you save even a half a million dollars because they come up with more revenue and better ideas and what have you, and I use this term all the time, but you can't know what you don't know. And so if we're trying to evaluate, you know, the suggestions of an advisory committee or what have you, we're going to apply the same logic and the same ideas in the same way evaluation. You know, we'll be in essence doing the same thing over that we've done before and I don't know why we would expect to get different results, but if, in doing that. But if we bring a consultant in that is an expert and can evaluate it with a different, using a different criteria and a different knowledge base than what we have to evaluate it, I think it'd be money well spent.
I think one thing too, Steve and I have talked about this, I know a lot of us have talked about this as of late, is that I know that this group and other groups like you want nights, I should say nights or weekend or some kind of added service. And I would hope somehow, some way, if we're going to get a consultant, a consultant, I'd like to see this as part of that scope of work if we can, Steve, that they can provide us some opportunities on how to go about that, how to judge what might be the best routes to help your staff. Because I think if there's a way at the end of this rainbow, we could end up with some added service without greatly increasing our subsidy, I think that's kind of why this all started. Mr. Bray.
Well, I was afraid we'd be asked to spend some money tonight. I'm not convinced that there's a magic wand that's going to make everything better. We've been in the transit business for a long, long time and have some of the best experience right here in the room and on the staff. Do I understand right, you estimate maybe to 50 to 70, the range of the, the cost of the consultant could be what?
50 to 75,000, depending on this scope of the work, yeah.
So I'm receptive to the concept and the idea, and Councilman Scrivner, you endorsed that, this approach, right?
Here's my feeling.
Go ahead.
There's, I don't know how many people are out here, I could do a quick head count, but if we have been consistently saying that we have evaluated this to the best of our ability, that we have experienced people that have evaluated it, we have written budgets, we have a lot of history involved here. I've been on the council for six years and we've basically been saying the same thing and based on the response from the group that supports increased transit, they don't believe us. So if we continue to evaluate it in the same way and continue to use our expertise as the basis and justification for saying we don't have the money and that we can't do it, they're still not going to believe us. So in my mind, 75,000 is the only way, or 50, whatever it costs, is the only way that you bring in an objective third party that comes in and evaluates it and they tell us that we've been wrong and there is a way to do more, or they tell us you've been right all along, there's not more that you can do. I don't know any other way to get that validation other than to bring in an expert.
That's a, well, I would be, I would, I'm warming to your comments and the points you make. I think you make some good valid points. I suppose at this time, there's no harm in having the staff put together the RFP and identify what our needs and wants are, are in that RFP and then, and then also, and then see what the bids are, what the prices are to get that done. There's no harm in that.
The only thing I would add to that is that I would think the consultant would go through a process of identifying, helping the community identify the wants. I know what you mean, for the RFP, getting that together and going through that process, but I think that that's very important to have a number of meetings where stakeholders and people can come, and I don't know how they're going to go about that, but I think that's important to have the community help identify that, but yes.
And I agree 100% with that.
And Councilman Scrivner, I agree with you 100%. I guess my concern is that, where do we pull this 75,000 from?
I think that staff's recommendation would be that we, we have money in capital improvement. I think it's shaky whether you could classify this as capital improvement or not, but we do have money allocated for transit in the, in the capital improvement sales tax. And so then, there is money that has been allocated for transit use and I would say that's where we get that money.
And if I could just add, there may be some other sources out there. I don't know, the federal government's probably not one of them, but there may be, or there may be some private sector. We had a bunch of people saying how important transit was to their particular business. They might be interested in helping to participate in the funding as well as some other nonprofit organizations.
And can I just add one thing? And when Steve and I, we did a conference call with some FDA and MoDOT officials and they did indicate there might be some grant monies to help with this effort. Now, it may not be 80, 20, but it might be something. We would obviously pursue that, too.
Mr. Bray.
And going back to my original thought, I still would like for us to investigate more how we can get more advertising on our bus. I'm looking at it from a standpoint, and going back to this again, if there's a big businesses out there, they're going to focus on the big cities where there's a lot of advertising. Where if we don't have anybody who's local to reach out to be a middle person to this big company, then I don't think we're ever going to fill up our buses with advertising. That could be a way that we could possibly pay for this consultant is if we can increase the advertising on our bus. I'm sure each and every bus out there is not filled up with advertisement. Or am I wrong?
I think all the placards are full, it's just the wraps are not on. The bus hasn't been wrapped, that's a more expensive, we had one and then they just quit, but we got one today, they're going to wrap a bus.
They have a potential sale on a wrap. We did at one time have all of the placards full, but it's a rotation. They've got other people coming in. Right now, they have a couple of signs on the buses that say advertise on this bus, but the whole time, they're getting new clients and it's just, it's a rotation. So the new ones will be on, they'll call and say, we'll be down a certain day and we'll fill them back up, but it takes time. It's a constant rotation.
I think there's some opportunities for advertising.
Thank you.
Is there advertising inside the buses or is it just on the outside?
Right now, it's just on the outside. We've talked about, we've talked about some inside advertising. There's just not a lot of money to be made with the inside advertising. So we started this program with the outside advertising and we'll discuss it further, but it just didn't seem like for our market, there was a big enough opportunity for inside advertising.
Richard, I'll guarantee you this, as a former billboard salesman in Jefferson City, if you give me the choice between a sign that's sitting still and one that's going up and down the road, probably just tonight, you'll probably get some more people that are interested in wraps. I'm going to call Chick-fil-A tomorrow myself. Ralph?
I'll make the motion to authorize staff to prepare an RFP for council's approval.
I second that motion.
Been a motion made to have staff create an RFP and come back to us?
Yes.
Before it goes out, is that correct?
Correct.
All right, discussion, please. I think, I think he will do that when he comes back, so. Any other discussion?
I think we need to get some input from these folks out here on what needs to go in that RFP. They are the users of that bus system. I don't think any of us write it on a regular basis or even on an irregular basis. They're the ones that know the needs and the wants.
I think, Steve, that's something you can probably reach out and get and also what you bring before us, we can make available to some of their key people, so they kind of have an idea as far as what that scope and whatnot is. Thank you, Glenn, very good.
You're welcome.
Just a clarification, is your scope of appointment going to be dealing with services and so forth? Or is it just going to be dealing with the qualifications of the consultant? I mean, in other words, I understand that during the, during the process, at once a consultant's in place, they will no doubt be doing community meetings and input and so forth, but is that something that is a part of the RFP that you're going to be putting out to the consultant?
The community meetings I would envision being part of the request for proposals. Specific suggestions at this time, I would not. I think that's something that the consultant needs to go through and have the public meetings and have the stakeholder meetings and do all the things, get all that input, put that into their thinking process and it's a long process. But, so does that answer the question? I wouldn't put the specific ideas in the RFP. It's just a consultant with experience and have, we can put in the stakeholder meetings and some of those kinds of things. Does that answer?
Yes, I mean, it just didn't seem to me that, that that's the point where you're asking for public input. I mean, granted, your RFP will specify that part of the, what we're wanting you to do is conduct these meetings and get input from stakeholders, et cetera, et cetera, but ideas about improvements for the, for the transit is, I wouldn't think would be a part of an RFP.
I would agree. But that still means, doesn't mean I can sit down with different groups and get some input on, once we get a draft RFP put together.
Steve, in your eyes, would the proposed consultant possibly come back with different changes in current routes, hours, headways? I mean, will they be giving us some advice on that or will we just be leaving that to staff?
I would say general advice perhaps. What I would want to keep away from is
Because I, the only reason I ask is because I don't know what those kind of consultants necessarily provide us normally.
Yeah, there's another exercise you can go through to do a root analysis. I'm not recommending that. It doesn't mean that a consultant can't give some guidelines and say, you know, we can talk about those, but going through and doing a very detailed root analysis can cost a whole lot and I just don't think we're to that point.
Janice, is that what we did in '08? Was it a root analysis or just overview?
The transit development plan
Yes.
was roughly a route analysis.
The one that was about this thick?
Right, there was a little bit of that in there.
Okay, who's next? Mr. Henry.
Well, I guess that was going to be my question. What would be the difference between what, what the analysis in '06 and up to this point? Because what you don't want to have, what you don't want to happen is you go and hire a consultant for the same thing that was done back in '06 and we're still stuck where we are.
Right. I think the first question to ask is a million dollar subsidy, if you're okay with that, then I think we're probably done and we don't need to go any further. If there's a question about, can we improve on that million dollar subsidy and use that money, won't be all of it, but some of it, for something else, you decide what the something else is, then maybe there's else is, then maybe there's merit to that. The 2006 study, in my, in my mind, the strategic plan is, this is what we want to accomplish and how we're going to accomplish it. Maybe there's some steps that are short-term, like talk to Lincoln and see if they would be interested in, in having, participate in our transit system somehow. I don't get into all those different ideas. Maybe there's different things to do on a route. Maybe there's something to do with a lot of, you know, we can come up with all different kinds of ideas. Columbia's got some things where they charge a fee for their parking. So I think it's a matter of figuring out, what are the right things for JeffTran? When those things occur, there may be something that's appropriate to occur short time, short term, and something that's appropriate to occur long term. I don't know what those are, because we didn't go through and figure out all the ideas yet. And so that's what this would be. This would be a plan that says, this is what's going to happen on this particular timeframe. 2006 was a little bit different to that. That information's going to be used. Some of that information will be used, because I think there's some important information in there, but the world has changed since 2006. You can see, in the memo, we identified some of the changes that have occurred, 2006, '07, '08, '09, '07, '08, '09. That's a different world than it is right now. But I think that laying out those strategies, and, and you may not feel comfortable with anything. See, that's, that's the point. There may be a lot of things you have some ideas. The community may come up with a bunch of ideas, some of which you may like, some of which you may not, some of which you think are appropriate for JeffTran, some of which may not be. But this will be a way to weed those out and say, these are the, whatever they are. Hundred ideas, this is when they're going to occur. So that's a little bit different than 2006 in my mind.
Any other questions of council, of staff, or discussion on the current motion on the floor? Mr. Carlos?
So this RFP that's going to be drawn up, it will be something that will be shared, of course, with the council, of course, and the mayor, but with public interest, too, because I hate to even bring this back up, but I think it's one of the reasons why we have a failed conference center, because of the, because of the RFP. So is that something that other stakeholders will be involved in, in this RFP, or what?
What I understood the direction was that we have a, a public input process for developing in the RFP. The RFP, in my mind, really is, is, City of Jefferson City is interested in a consultant with this kind of experience, looking at developing a strategic plan that will involve the public and stakeholders to do one, two, three, four, five. It, it's not to have all the different ideas, you know, should, should, you know, this be increased, or that be changed, or, you know, that, I think, is part of what a consultant needs to come in and, and go through that process. Because I don't know that a consultant can come in and say, this is what's right for Jefferson City, without coming and hearing all the different kinds of things, and ideas, and suggestions, and understanding our system. So it's a, the, the RFP is, is really pretty straightforward, but if there are some things that are important from a public point of view, that makes sense to include in there, I'm fine with trying to get that input.
Steve, did I just hear, basically, a consultant will kind of make the, take all the, take all the water, all the input, all the above, from the community, all the volume, all of the needs and wants, and then take that during their consulting period with us, and then mold what we may be able to do with that in different forms down the road? Pardon the pun on road.
My thought is, is that, but they will come in and help develop a plan that you all approve, that says, this is where we're going. This is what we want to accomplish, and this is how we're going to accomplish it. Now, I don't know what that is, because I haven't had that discussion with you all. Maybe it's, if, if the answer is nothing, if the answer is, the subsidy of a million dollars a year is okay, then I agree, that's probably not a, a cost that we want to incur. So, but my, my view, vision would be that the, the consultant comes in and says, takes all that information, all the ideas, and helps develop a plan, that this is what's going to occur, and when?
Ralph, did you have a comment?
The summation you offered in response to Councilman Graham's question mirrors my expectations when I made the proposal. I, I think we're on the same page.
Mr. Prather?
Steve, how long would you think this entire process is going to take? Just at approximate, your guess, and will we get some kind of timetable?
We, the, the consultants, we would be requesting them to provide a timetable. I think it's probably longer than you would typically anticipate for a smaller transit system, because of the public input process. I think there's going to be a lot of meetings with different groups, and the consultants need to understand that that's your expectation. So I bet it's, I bet it's six months. It's probably not in time for budget, and I, I bet it's six months, depending on the consultant and their availability.
Steve, you've said a couple of times that the question is whether or not we're okay with a million dollar subsidy, and I, I really don't think that's the question, because here, here's, what I see the question as, is, is it feasible to have a, have a million dollar plus subsidy, because, and are we, would we be satisfied with that, because the public, the, the, the users group, the support group, is not satisfied today with, with the service that we're providing, and the service we're providing today costs a million dollar subsidy? So the question is, can we provide the services that are desired and somehow find a way to finance it? Because the, the, we're, we're not being asked by this group to maintain a, a million dollar subsidy. We're being asked by this group to increase services. And, and so, we can't be content to just ask ourselves, are we okay with a million dollar subsidy? We have to ask ourselves, is there any way to increase services and pay for it? Because if, if, and, and what I'm going to want this consultant ultimately to come up with is, is tell us, one, what it would cost to, to add those services, and is there any possible way that we can do it, based on the revenues that are available to us, or the revenues that we can generate to, to potentially pay for it? Because ultimately, I don't think we're going to be able to do what we're being asked to do for the same million dollar subsidy that we currently have. If we can, that'd be great, but I don't think that we're going to be able to do that. And, and I don't think we, sitting here, are going to be able to figure that out on our own. I think it is going to require somebody else to help us figure it out.
Yeah. I, I, I think I agree with what you're saying. I think a consultant can come in and give you a hundred ideas on things to do, and then run. I don't think that that answers our question, when and what. Out of those hundred, there may be two or three that you all feel comfortable pursuing, and when do those happen? Everything isn't going to happen all at once. Maybe it happens later on, or maybe the answer is, nothing. Maybe it is where we are, and, you know, it's fine.
Right. But, but I, I guess I'm just wanting to, to make sure that everybody realizes that we're, we're not being asked to maintain the status quo. We're being asked to increase services. And so, we're, we're going to have to find out if that's even feasible or not, and if so, what's it cost?
Okay. Well, that, that can be a different question than developing a strategic plan. That can be a question as simple as you said. What, what are some options to help pay for service? We've got several of those ideas. Some of them mentioned in the memo. So that's a different, it can be a different question. Doesn't mean it can't be part of a strategic plan question.
I was going to say, in the, in the, in the, when you're developing a strategic plan, you're also examining the feasibility of where you want, because you're going to find out where you want to go, but you're also going to find out, what are the opposi, or the, the obstacles to being able to do that?
Correct.
And, and as you discover those obstacles, obviously, cost's going to be one of them. And, and you either figure out a way in that plan to overcome those obstacles, or you decide, this can't be a part of our plan, because that obstacle can't be overcome.
Correct.
All right. Mr. Henry?
Call for a question.
Question's been called. Is there a second?
Yep, second.
Question's been called and yeped and/or seconded, depending on where you're from. Is that discussion, Drew? It's been a while since we had one of those. No discussion? Okay. We can go voice vote on that, voice vote on calling the question and ending discussion. If you're in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
If you're opposed, same sign. That's unanimous. Now we'll have roll call, please. Would you please give us a quick synopsis of that motion?
Yes. Councilman Bray moved to authorize staff to create an RFP for council approval.
I think it's pretty round, okay. With that being said, anyone understands that? Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Costalis?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivener?
Aye.
Motion passes. That's, we're down to eight now? Eight to, eight to zero? Appreciate that. Steve, do you want to give us a conclusion, please?
Well, I, there were some other short-term recommendations in there. Did you want us to proceed with those other short-term recommendations, or hold off on those? One of which was to look at a fair increase of what the impact would be. That doesn't mean that that's what to do, but to start that process, there's a lot of analysis and input. I think that can happen at a staff level. Look at some advertising, look at some other partnership opportunities that are short-term kinds of things, but there are some other longer-term ones as well.
Carlos?
I think right now, as a city administrator, I think everything should be on the table.
Exactly.
Mr. Mayor?
Learned a lot in the last couple of weeks, huh? Bob, anything else?
I don't, are you asking for a motion to do those, or?
No, I think you just want for overall, overall input from the council. And just so the public knows, this is kind of a different forum for us. Normally, we're sitting across the hall. It's a big table. You can kind of see everybody. There's questions and answers, back and forth, back and forth. You don't have these fancy microphones. We actually use our regular voices. But we did this tonight, so you guys could be here, and so people could see this on TV, as far as transit. Steve, I want to thank you. Janice, I want to thank you. I know you've had a lot to do with transit through the years. Matt Marash, thank you. And Mr. Turner, I would like to have a round of applause for Richard, who helps runs our transit system. And on behalf of John Marsh, I've got something I can tell you, but I can't tell you right now. Mr. Graham?
Are we about to, John?
Are we?
I was asking. I had a question. I had a question before we do that.
Wait a minute, go ahead.
So, are we any steps closer, or, or farther away from creating this committee to help look at transit, or are we just not talking about that tonight?
Steve?
I, I didn't have that on as one of the items to, to talk about for tonight. I don't know where that is. I know that there were some proposals that were being thought about, but I don't know if that, I don't know how else to answer that.
From what we had talked about before, I think as we move forward, especially with this RFP process, I think that people in the room would have their voices heard, and if, and if that consultant, maybe the consultant can tell us more on exactly how to do that. But I think public input is definitely needed.
I'm, I'm just, I guess, concerned. I mean...
Let me ask you this. Do you want a steering committee?
I mean, I would love to have one. I mean, because that's what they've been asking for, and maybe they can come up with some ideas of, of what we really haven't looked at, and it's not just people who support.
Sorry.
But it's also people who, who, who doesn't support. So that, that was my thought. You know, I'm hoping that we can move forward with, with the committee, sir.
Okay. Steve, maybe you could work on that in the next few weeks, then. As far as a formulation of a committee, or at least who the members are, does anyone have any comments as far as what we've seen so far, on what a steering committee would look like, and who proposed those?
Well, I know for me, I mean, we've got advisory boards, we've got committees for this, we've got, we've got committees for almost, and, and advisory boards for almost every other essential service here in the city. And for, and at this point, as important as this issue is, to not have one, I, I don't under, I don't understand that at this point. I mean, everything that, everything that we've talked about today, since I've been on the council for the last two years, tells me, we need one. And I don't understand, and I don't understand why we keep dragging, dragging that, dragging that part of it out at this point. It's, it's just time for it.
Glenn?
To follow up on that, the transit is a essential service, but yet, there's a commission for cultural arts and historic preservation. Those aren't essential services. And I think we need to put essential services...
Just so you know, just so you know, Glenn, I think there is a commission currently, or committee for transit. Is there not, Richard, or Matt?
It's a focus group.
What's the difference between a focus group and an advisory group?
It, it's just a, a group of riders that, that meet. It's not an advisory group.
I would say to the council, if you want to appoint, I got to ask Drew a question. If the, can the council appoint a committee?
Yeah. I mean, they can create the committee. Any councilman could sponsor a bill to amend the code to create the committee.
Okay. And then who appoints the committee?
Well, the mayor, the mayor points with consent of the council.
Okay. So...
Now, the council can set out...
What I would do, what I would do is this, is that if you truly want an advisory committee to report to us, that I would actually appoint the members of, whether it's a XYZ member from this group, so on and so forth. As a council, if that's what you want to do, I, I would get to work to try to do that, whether it's through one of your committees, but if that's what you truly want to do, let's get that done.
And I think we just ask the council members, how do they feel? I mean, so there may be some people that, that doesn't feel, if we're outvoted, then we're outvoted. So let's put it to the vote, and let's see.
Right. The only thing I want to see is, I want to see a balanced, a balanced committee. I think you need that. And I'll be very honest, I, I'm not sure about a sixteen-person committee. It seems to be a little bit big, but that's just my two cents, but it's your...
I totally agree. A balanced committee. Those who support, and those who don't support.
Well, I'm saying, I mean, just balanced throughout the community, everything. Just like we did with Mr. Kroll. Bob?
If there's a councilman that are more, that feel like that there should be a committee, then it ought to follow the process that, that they all follow, and that is, get a, get an ordinance written up, and bring it to a, a council meeting, and debate it.
I think one step beyond that, Bob, I think if you're going to do this, I think this probably needs to take place at the committee levels, because you well know, we all know this, that's how most of our bills or ordinances come together.
But I would suggest that the, the councilman that, that wants to do it, needs to go to Drew and get it, get the ordinance written, and present it at a, at a council, or a committee meeting, and then...
What committee would that be? Drew?
Probably Public Works, although we've also created him in Admin. I would think Public Works, because it's a function of the Public Works Department.
Okay.
Then, I'd say, Councilman Graham, if, if you have a particular committee in mind, make up, so on and so forth, you need to get a bill written and get it, you know, get it, bring it to the committee meeting, and, you know, if, if you, if you're suggesting ten people, and the committee thinks that there ought to be eight, then they'll amend your bill to eight, and, and they'll, they'll send it on that way. If you're suggesting four, and they think it ought to be seven, they'll, they'll change it to seven. But I mean, that's the way...
They look, they look different at the end than what they do when you're first drafting them in your kitchen, don't they, Bob?
Pardon me?
They look a lot different at the end than when we're just drafting them in our kitchens.
Usually, they do. But, but I think...
But I think that's builds consensus.
I think that's the appropriate way to do it. I don't think, you know, you take a straw poll vote on, based on a motion at a, at a work session.
Right.
Well, Ms., Councilman Scrivener, I'd be more than happy to take that up.
All right. Thank you, Carlos.
Thank you.
So more to come. What's the official title going to be?
I'll get with Drew, and we'll work it out.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Mr. Mahalovich?
I'd like to be sure that goes through administration committee, too.
Okay.
I think that, that as administration has appointments they oversee.
What you, all of that would be going through. Are you talking about the committee itself? The makeup of the committee, or the people serving on the committee? Because as administration, you automatically get approval of the people. I make, I make that approval actually to you, then you either bless those or not, and then they come on to the whole council. You're talking about the whole process, the...
I'm talking about the ordinance as a whole.
The ordinance as a whole.
Before it's made.
The ordinance as a whole. Okay.
We could, on big issues, we've run them through both those two committees, because I think that's the one that, that are exactly opposite. So if we ran it through Admin and Public Works, you'd get all ten council people's input before it goes to council.
Kind of a building block as you go. Okay. Timeframe on that, Carlos? What are you thinking, or?
I have a discussion with Drew tonight, and we're going to meet tomorrow. We can, we'll go from there.
Bob, when's your meeting's coming up? I know we're just now getting ready to hit the end of June.
It wouldn't be till about third week of July.
I'll have a discussion with Drew tonight, and we'll probably meet tomorrow, we can, we'll go from there.
Bob, Windsor meeting's coming up. I know we're just now getting ready to hit, is the end of June?
It wouldn't be till about third week of July.
Surely by then, we could have some type of, I know, I think there's been some talk about a draft anyway, so.
Is there any other councilman that would like to work on that with me?
I will.
Thank you, Councilman Henry.
Okay, Rick?
You know, I've kind of been avoiding that topic, but if we're going to bring it forward, I'm willing to debate it, and let's go forward with it. I was hoping this scope of services by our consultant was going to address the public input side, and to determine whether that should be a long-term avenue for which we move forward in the ordinance. I respect that, and I'd look forward to debating and looking at what you come up with.
Can you run the committee and the, and the consultant? See what I'm trying to say here at the same time? Not, not run, but can you get input from, if a committee's not formed yet, surely a committee would be formed. If we're going to form one, it would be formed before a consultant would be here. Is that right, Drew? Plus or minus?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay. Bob?
I, I agree with what I think you just said, and that is, that I would think that, that one of your long-term, or not long-term, but one of your strategic, part of your strategic plan, that part of your evaluation, would be whether or not a advisory committee would be something that, that you would appoint. I would think that'd be something that you would study as well. I, I think it's very critical that when you write this ordinance, that you consider the, what, what authority, what, you know, how, how this is going to be constituted. You know, it's true, we have a number of commissions and a number of committees, but I would certainly compare what their duties and what responsibilities and authorities and so on and so forth are, and I would, would make this committee similar to those. I wouldn't, I wouldn't have the role be significantly different than it is with, in terms of authorities and so forth, that are with your other commissions.
Good, Drew? All right.
Mr. Bray?
I will move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of adjournment, please say aye.
Aye.
I'll oppose, same sign.
Thank you, and Ashley, congratulations.